Good, how are you doing?
Gosh.
Huh? I'm good. So, I'm trying to make it on the gym. We can't prove a big case. You should please look at something. Oh, did this pass? No. Right on. You can see it.
Here, how are you?
Good, how are you, buddy? You okay?
Yeah, we're great. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, it was all so great. Sorry to delay. I just wanted to like talk about like your top of the.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
I'm making it easier about topics.
They send someone up and warning.
It's a tough job.
Yeah, take care.
Well, there's mine.
Pretty soon. Yeah. It's better to be cautious, you know.
I think it's it's.
Most cards have a name, sign first here, but it's a seatbelt. So, I suppose it's just, you can see it's a seatbelt. It's just.
We were out every four hours.
We get some customers. I remember well, they actually had a bill. And so, you can just say, I was about here.
Well, she's been there for close to eighteen more hours. So, she's got her best rock. She's got to. Yeah. They're all like family. They're going, most of them have been there. They're still weird. Yeah. Ready? to order. And roll call, please.
Counselor Westover?
Here.
Counselor Born?
Here.
Counselor Baker?
Here.
Counselor Snyder?
So.
Counselors Trump?
Here.
Counselor Cameron?
Here.
Mayor Le?
Here.
Plaidlerian, please.
Could you apply the United States of America, a true republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Thank you. Let's not do a presentation from our auditors. Richard Brewster is here to present.
Okay.
And I'm going to have Eric, you know, things to kick on for us. Jeanette back here is obviously a big part of the audit process as well as her support staff. So, there's a couple documents I think we're going to be handing out. You already have in front of you. One is the manage management letter. It's dated December twelfth. That's what Mr. Brewster is going to be going over tonight. And then, December fourteenth, letter responding to some of the issues that were outlined in the management letter. Again, which is addressed to Mr. Brewster on the fourteenth. So, with that, this is the transition to our new to our new auditor. We had wall and wall, I think, for several years and. Three years. Three years, okay. Just a few years. But anyway, so we were transitioning to a new auditor. And and with a new finance director and those kind of things, it was a good experience to kind of go have these seen through a different set of lenses. And so, we appreciate it. Jesse, who is primarily the person we work with on the audit process and Richard's here tonight to present that information.
Jesse and my staff has about thirty years audit experience and I've got twenty-five. So, between us, there's a lot of audit experience in the office. And we audit a lot of governments and not-for-profits. And your city just happened to be convenient for us. We appreciate the business.
Okay.
So, I thought what I do today is is I'll address that letter at the end. But I'd like to look at the audit report and just bounce through maybe ten pages of the audit report. I'll start with pages one and two. At the beginning of the report, there's usually a table of contents. Yes, the bound book. And it gives us pleasure to say, somebody actually looks at this thing, you know. So, when we're done, we spent a couple hundred hours on, you know, auditing this and we get five minutes of fame at the end to explain what we did.
Thank you very much.
So, pages one and two at the very beginning is the standard audit opinion. What you need, because you have public money, is somebody to attest that your financial statements are truly free from material misstatements. And that's what this report does. It's above colored page. The first paragraph says, we're auditing your financial statements for the year in June thirty-seventeen. The next paragraph basically lies out, your responsibility is put a framework of controls in place that makes sure that you can produce financial statements that are free from material misstatement. The next paragraphs are my responsibility. I have to do enough work to say indeed whether or not they're free from material misstatement. We've done that. And the audit opinion on that bottom of that page basically says that. Nothing came to our attention. Your books and records look right. The next page just shows there's some complimentary information and some state disclosures that are in there. And then, what we do when we're done with those state disclosures is give you some recommendations. That's part of our process. Okay? I'm going to look at page six. The first part of the report, pages three through fifteen, are a management section. They're really your comments on why do the numbers look the way they look? So, on page six, it shows a balance sheet as of June thirty-seventeen. I'm going to just look at the bottom line numbers and look at your net position. You have a bunch of funds that you keep track of. Some of them are called government funds and some of them are called business-type funds. But the government funds at the end of fiscal year in June seventeen had six point seven million dollars net equity in them. The business-type activities, your water funds, had three million dollars in them. So, combined, you had almost nine point eight million net assets after debt, after depreciation and everything. So, pretty substantial size. Couple pages over, page eight, that was a balance sheet showing a snapshot of June thirty-seventeen. Page eight shows an income statement. We call it a statement of activities, statement of net position. If we look at the third line from the bottom, the governmental activities had a change in net position this year of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars positive. The business-type activities combined had two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars positive. So, combine the two sets of funds, two types of funds, has seven hundred and twelve thousand dollar improvement. So, that looks pretty substantial in my mind.
In the right direction, right?
Yeah, that's a good direction. Page twelve. One of the largest assets, obviously, is lands, property and equipment, infrastructure. And at the top of page twelve, it shows that you've got seven point five million dollars of those assets that are tied up in things. Four millions in the general fund of governmental activities and three and a half million dollars in the water funds, the enterprise funds. So, compared to the year before, that seven and a half million was seven point three million dollars. So, you've added a little bit this year, a couple hundred thousand dollars during this fiscal year, but that's a substantial accumulation over the years. At the very bottom of that page, there's the debt that's outstanding your city owes. We have debt of four point eight million dollars primarily to pay for that infrastructure, that equipment, those buildings. So, you can see they're all laid out there. Three million dollars in the government funds and one point eight million dollars in the business fund. I'm going to highlight back to page sixteen. And now, we get a little more drill down to say, rather than the overview, this is where the audits and financials really start, page sixteen. But I'm going to highlight the top number. Because what happens in most entities is they run short of cash and carryover money. You had five point two million dollars in cash. A substantial portion of it is earmarked for specific purposes. But in the general fund, it is in the left-hand column, three point seven million, in the water funds, one point, almost one point five million dollars. If I look at another line on there that brings a lot of attention is the line that says, net pension liability. PERS is a big subject when you talk about any budget and your budget's no difference. But the line that says net pension liability shows that your PERS debt for your PERS employees, according to actuaries, is one point six seven four million dollars. So, substantial portion of those debts is either bonded debt, where you borrow money to buy things, or accrued expenses of which the pension liabilities the lovers. The other line that I'll highlight is compensated absences. Because you have employees, they have earned time off. And that's really what that represents. Earned time off for your employees was about seventy-seven thousand dollars. I think that's all I need to share there. Let's look at page seventeen. And this income statement, statement of activities, kind of lays out, which you've seen this format before, but it starts out at the top with expenses. How much does it cost this city to operate? And if you look at the government activities, it shows under the expense column, top-left column, two point seven million dollars is the cost to operate for a year. Business activities cost one point one million dollars to operate. The water fund carries itself. The billing has to cover the cost because that's the way it's set up. So, you can see in the water fund, the billings were a million three and the costs were a million one. So, it actually accumulated a little bit of money, which will pay for things as they break and have a little money to carry over projects. But the general fund is highly tax-supported. We had two point seven million dollars worth of expenses. We had some things that we could bill for, five hundred and eight thousand. We had some grants, twenty-two thousand, leaving a deficit of two point two million dollars. That's why you levy taxes. The two point million, two million dollars below that is the revenues in that same governmental activities column, was two point six million dollars. A million dollars of those property taxes. And then, some of it's the normal things you see on a monthly basis, intergovernmental fees, franchise fees, fines and forfeitures, licenses and permits, et cetera. So, that's why the governmental funds accumulated four hundred thousand, four sixty-seven. And the business activities was the two forty-five. There's our seven hundred thousand dollar swing to be good, just to highlight where the money came from and went. I think I'll bounce clear back to the page sixty-seven. Near the back of the report. There's a disclosure on property taxes. The million dollars that that came in this year is pretty comparable to prior years. But this schedule on page sixty-seven just shows how much is outstanding at the beginning and end of the year. The left-hand column shows the beginning of the year numbers. Outstanding taxes owed your city was sixty-five thousand dollars. The right-hand column shows the outstanding at the end of the year, seventy-seven thousand. Our levies in that second to the left-hand column was a million forty-five thousand dollars. When people paid their taxes by November, they get a discount. So, that's that next column. But basically, what that's saying is that between current and prior years, you're going to collect one hundred percent of your levy. About ninety-three percent comes in the first year and the other seven percent dribbles in over the next five years. So, you're doing fine, but that's your property taxes, most of which is the current year. The last two pages are state requirements. I have to comment on how you guys did with the bolded items on the bottom of page sixty-eight. They're concerned with things like, do I have money in safe banking? Do I have authorized debts? Did I follow my budget? Do I have insurance? Did I handle grants correctly? Do I have contracts? Did I follow public bidding law? And as far as we can tell, the only items we're suggesting in our recommendation letter that we be careful with is budget. You were over expended on two categories. And on the second page at the top, it shows we overspent capital outlay in the capital reserve fund and a little bit in parks and rec SBC fund. Not concerned with those numbers because they're accumulated for that purpose. But that is a budget violation, which just says be careful next. The items in the recommendation letter were five or six things. One was just reminding you, and it is a letter that was loose in the front. And it has at the bottom, financial statement preparation is the first bolded item. But there's about five or six things on here that we just say are worth noting. We generally break these down into three categories. Material weakness, I'll call that a harsh violation. Significant deficiencies next in line. And last is just general comments. Most of yours are just general comments. They don't have any material weaknesses. Financial statement preparation, the reminders, this year and most years and for most of my clients, we draft this document. We take your numbers and put it in this format. We have to keep up on budget while auditing and reporting. The reminders, we do that, even though they're your numbers, we do that. On the top of page two, it just shows that when we look at the books and records, we have to determine materiality. That term just means if it was off, was it off enough to concern somebody in the big picture? A percentage of assets, a percentage of revenues. We found that cash was off between your bank reconciliations and your general ledger. And your letter responding to that says, you're working with a software company because there was a glitch. But there was a difference of about nineteen thousand dollars between what the book said and what was in the books. It doesn't mean there's missing cash, there just was a tiny reconciliation difference. So, we suggested by next year, make that right. Accounts receivable. One of the things that a city like yours has to track is fines and forfeitures, many of which dribble in for a long period of time. That if we show them on the financial statements, we have to determine, are they collectible and at what level? So, what Jeanette says is, I'm not sure that we want to track them. I think we want to just track them as they come in. And I agree with that, that, you know, there's no reason to have the fines and forfeitures that may or may never come in listed as a receivable. So, we're suggesting that next year, take it off. That means that next year, you'll have a fund balance adjustment of beginning prior period adjustment to take that asset off the books. I'm not concerned with that. We're not sure how collectible it is in the first one.
So, you're going cash, which accrual on that?
We're switching from accrual to cash on on just fines and forfeitures. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. The other one is fund balances. When we were tying in things from last year, there was some differences and we have in the back of the report, prior period adjustment. How that generally happens is the auditor makes some changes and those changes never get posted to your books. So, we're suggesting, and I think we've already done that, is any adjustments that we produce, we give to you. These are suggestions of these changes should be made. And you post it to your books and then before we're done, we make sure your books match all right. Okay? Capital reserve fund. You have a fund and included in that was sources from two different pots. You had some that were governmental funds that put money in there and some from the water funds that are enterprise funds that are in there. We suggest, and in this audit report, we divided those out. There was about a five hundred thousand dollar swing where we just moved part of the one point two that was in there and just divided it up. It's just for better presentation. Where did the money originate and where will it be spent? It'll be spent on exactly the same thing. It'll be spent on capital projects. But were they governmental capital projects or water funds? Water funds self-supporting, so it needs to be separated. So, we did that in our capital reserve fund. On the next page, we've given you a depreciation schedule. We just ask next year that you keep it up. Most entities, if they have the software, are willing to keep it up. We try to make sure when we're done with an audit, that your books are so clean, we make less than three adjustments. We didn't have that this year. We'd like that next year. Budget, as I already noted, there's a couple funds that were over expended in the budget. So, just watch the budget and if you can avoid it, transfer money before you spend it so that that budget violation doesn't happen. So, I think you responded to all of those in the fourteenth letter, saying you've already addressed all of those. So, is there any other questions or comments?
No, no, I think you covered them very well.
Yeah. So, rather than battle on, I'll answer questions.
Anybody want to recognize our question or two?
Very thorough, thank you.
No questions?
All right.
Education there, good job.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you so much.
Thank you, it's next time.
Please come back next year. Appreciate the business.
All right. Good to see you. All right. The next item on the agenda, Gabriel wants to comment on it. We have recommendations on dates on the Kings High School.
Please.
I'm going to ask Gabriel later to join us for the inaugural discussion. He can wind up and join us for that, right?
So.
And introduce yourself to the audience who you are, thanks.
I'm Gabriel Wilson. I am the third representative of the high school, the Kings High School.
We have two reps and he one.
Yeah, so Priscilla can do that. She had, she went out of town because Christmas break and stuff like that. Yeah, so we had one of our first meetings with all the representatives at the school and I told them about the city center. And so, now they have it in their mind. So, next, next meeting, next city meeting, I will have more information about what we could use for the city center.
Great.
Yeah, so that really happened at the high school. We had some other issues, but that's what really happened that you guys needed to know. So, that's, that's it.
All right. So, when we start, let's have the inaugural, we can swing around and sharing my.
When should I do that?
We'll send you the agenda.
We go.
Twenty minutes, thirty minutes.
Okay, cool. Thanks, Gary. Are we up?
No one signed up for public comments for things that aren't on the agenda? We have, we're going to do a change in the agenda lineup of Church Street, Church Street thing. Couldn't bump it up. Does anybody else that wants to comment on things that are not on the agenda?
Okay. Great. Actually, we have a consent agenda, which are items that are, it's kind of easy to approve and not requiring a lot of discussion, but I hear there might be, one item that needs to be pulled for discussion, but I just asked council, anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda for discussion?
There was one item that had two clerical areas and I don't know if we need to pull that, but we can mention what we are, accept them as we, when we accept the changes.
I think you mentioned it here.
And we just, yeah, the consent agenda.
Good job.
In regard to the liquor license. Yeah. Do we need to pull it or do we just note it? I think we note, we can note it. I think the the motions are still correct in terms of, there are two separate liquor licenses still approving. So, our seven motion has to go with this one.
That's fine.
So, I think, is there anything else you want to comment on or pull? Okay. With that said, I'll maintain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approve unanimous one? We have three items under new business, including the renewal board directive orientation, the water system master plan update, and through the North Church Street CIP concept plan. As requested, I'm going to move up the review of the Church Street capital improvement plan, the concept plan update. There are a couple of people that want to comment on it. Would you guys like to hear the presentation first and then comment?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So, Aaron.
Okay, so, we, as promised, we're just having a kind of informational meeting. This has been a project that's been in the budget and we've done some very preliminary engineering work to kind of get an idea of what's, what's out there. There's a couple, couple issues we need to just sort of have a policy discussion around, you know, what the project's kind of shaping up to be, how that fits in our transportation system plan. Also, we'll call them DIA's, the first improvement agreements. So, if you hear that acronym, that, that's what that's talking about. And what that means is that the property owner, either the current property owner or previous property owner, had to sign an agreement to participate in improvements on Church Street in the future. Some of these agreements go back to the nineties, I believe.
Early nineties.
Early nineties. So, they're, they're quite, quite dated. And so, anyway, so those are just kind of things we want to just, again, this is informational. You know, when we get, when we get something more concrete to present, we'll, we'll certainly invite the affected property owners to a separate meeting and have that, that type of a discussion where we can, we can get into the, into the details of, of how each property owner's is affected and how we can work with the neighborhood to kind of mitigate those and try to come up with a project that will, you know, certainly benefit. I think we can all agree that there, there's, these improvements are much needed. It's just now a matter of how we, how we get it done. So, this is kind of the first step in getting the council aware of all the issues that are, that are out there and just kind of get feedback on that. But we got, we got more work that needs to be done with the neighbors and one-on-one conversations as we, as we move through this, this design process. So, with that, I'll, I'll let Evan, I think Evan's giving the presentation and Ray is kind of going to, they're going to tag team on, on kind of both the planning and the engineering aspects of this, of this project.
Hey, you'll probably see both of us jump in random points, if you don't mind. So.
You also have a copy of this that you can take with you. I don't know if that's good or it's.
So, North Church Street is in the city's capital improvement program for improvements. As all of you are aware, I'm sure it is currently not improved to city standards. It has travel lanes and that's about it. And they're pretty old. And I think Ray can probably talk to you a little better than I can about how once pavement gets to a certain state, you don't really resurface it. It doesn't work that way. You pretty much have to redo it. This is admittedly not the greatest shot. What I wanted to do was attempt to simply capture the affected properties and the addresses. So, this way, for reference, we can quickly look at what properties are affected and know the addresses. There's a total of thirty-six, I think, I think that's a correct count. Some of these lots, maybe it's scared or not all have houses on them, but I'm pretty sure that that number should be accurate.
I'll just point out, on that cemetery lot, we haven't had a lot of response from the people of the residents that.
No, we haven't. I was wondering if you were going to go there when we started with that.
From the people that maintained that facility, there have been discussions about what to do along that frontage. There is an extensive frontage there and right now, it's just a gravel sideline, sideline along the paved area. So, we can look at different options for what we want to do for cemetery frontage. It's a unique opportunity along the corridor.
So, this is the street as it sits today. Two travel lanes, that's it. No curb, no gutter, no sidewalk, no stormwater treatment, nevermind. Much of the space that's in the existing right-of-way has been more or less appropriated by the residents adjacent to the road, not terribly surprising. The city's standards for a local street call for ten-foot travel lanes in each direction, eight feet of on-street parking on both, on each side, curb and gutter, a five-foot sidewalk and a planter strip of four to eight feet, depending on how everything fits. The sidewalk can be anywhere beyond the curb based on the preliminary look. We are most likely looking at what we call a curb-tight sidewalk where the sidewalk lines up right at the edge of the curb. That should minimize the number of trees that will be impacted.
The planter strip width variation is actually relative to the right-of-way widths. Some of the right-of-way widths vary. Some of the right-of-way widths vary, but this one's a pretty good, pretty standard, just for the right-of-way. The concept of going in the, in the layout, so you see the concept of going to the curbside sidewalk is because it's consistent with what we see out there, what you've done with First Street, right, First Street's curbside sidewalk. Most of the, you know, the subdivision coming in here is pretty much same, very, so we actually see more elements in what we call the old town section of maintaining that curbside sidewalk rather than going to a boulevard sidewalk, which is where you have a planter strip, curb and sidewalk. Really, in that kind of environment, it just pushes the edge of the sidewalk closer and closer into the front yards of the adjoining residences. And in an already developed area like this, I personally don't have any issue with going with curbside sidewalk, I think it's slow enough speeds and safe enough conditions. I think Evan and I are both agree on that.
In this context, it, it works just fine and plus you get the benefit of being able to step out on the sidewalk when you park your car, rather than like. Now, so this is the first section of street. We will be starting basically where the existing sidewalk ends and heading south. Fortunately, where the sidewalk was done over near the post office is pretty darn close to what our standards call for and so we won't have a whole lot of transition. Now, what I attempted to do in this is to highlight the very obvious encroachments, be they structures or vehicles. And so you can see the arrows showing encroachments, the first house there, one-ten West Sixth. Based on the survey, it looks like they have an accessory structure and a carport that are both actually partially inside the public credit wing. They look pretty old, I'm sure they've been that way for a while. This one is not too bad, even though it's not entirely on their property, it doesn't look like it will affect construction or actual placement of the sidewalk. Moving a little further down at one-eleven West Sixth, the house on the other side of sixty, you can see, and I'll show that on the next slide a little better. We've got a number of encroachments where the houses are not in the right-of-way, but they're very close. And as a result, you've got people with mostly larger vehicles like RVs or boats, some kind of a trailer that is parked in a way that when the street is improved, there may not be enough room for those vehicles to be parked there. They may overhang the sidewalk, that is another advantage of the curv-tight sidewalk. If you don't have your minimum twenty-foot setback that we would require today, it gives you a little bit of wiggle room for parked vehicles that might extend over the edge of the property line. Although.
Good example is this lot right here, two-ten, two-ten West Fifth, where the sidewalk is just behind where the vehicles are parked, so they can probably still fit in there and not encroach on or overhang on the sidewalk. But it's a corner lot, one-eleven West Sixth, that mobile home or recreational vehicle is clearly gonna stick out. Well, it's gonna be real close unless they can find a way to get a push to the front lawn.
So, and that may simply be a matter of pushing it back without any instructions, we don't, we didn't look at every lot reaching these, but this is a preliminary.
And this, these darker lines, these darker parallel lines are the edge of the curb line. The lighter parallel lines just outside that, it's just a five-foot sidewalk, strike most parallel line. One thing, go back one.
Did I go?
Other way. There, there.
No.
To the.
One, two, first six, this thing's backwards.
There we go. One more, there, post office. So what Evan said, where the post office match line is for us, really, we took the right-of-way lines, had, had, the right-of-way lines have been surveyed in from a control point we could do, we could find, and we just told the engineer, just center cut this thing, lay it out exactly like it should be, if there were a new road, right down the center line of the right-of-way. And the edges of the sidewalk and the curb lines matched almost perfectly to what's out there. Now, I, I rarely see that, I, it's, I've been doing this a long time and I rarely ever see it, but they just were dead on, which is pretty impressive, there also shows some continuity in the type of alignment that we chose at least for this section. So which one's our?
We didn't go on Church Street, so this only looks at Church Street.
He excited, you could probably go to the overhaul.
Yeah, the overhaul shows it on the.
Keep going. Over, is that, is that it?
You can see it like the first, the first picture, you can see it.
Yeah, so they're not impacted at all.
Post office is over here.
And the fence in the back of the property?
Back of.
If they, if there is sidewalk abutting their property already, we probably won't be touching that property, is that safe to say?
Okay.
Yeah, we won't be, it looks like that matched up right onto the curb line back there.
Alright, thank you.
One thing to notice, see if I can get through, Ray, do you wanna highlight the bulbouts? We have curb extensions shown on most blocks, although not on every corner of all blocks, if that makes sense. It is a preliminary design, but of course, the benefit of those is that they force traffic to slow down in turns and also for people who might be wanting to cross, they put you a little closer out to the traffic, so you, there's a better chance of you seeing each other. So it's a definite safety improvement.
It also provides backend protection for parked vehicles.
So, one thing that, that's not really in the, the design books is the, the condition of the pavement right now is very effective traffic calming. So, this is something that, you know, we will see speeds pick up when the pavement is improved, because it'll be so much smoother and safer. It'll be easier for people to drive fast and installing those curb extensions will help to keep speeds down, hopefully.
What if that's a direct one?
We will get to that then. So first, I think what we'll do is we'll just kind of go block by block here and talk generalities. But, so moving on between sixth and fifth, you can see the curb extensions again, we've got a number of vehicle encroachments, some of which may or may not be impacted, you know, they may still be further behind the sidewalk to, than, to, to need any change. Anything else on this one, Ray?
One thing that's gonna be prevalent along all these is on the west side of the street of Church, a significant number of utility poles have to be relocated. And made contact with utility company there, where they're, they're gonna take a look at how they can best achieve relocations or reorientation of some of the poles.
Does it ever save for them, or do we have to pay them for that?
We're pretty sure that they should be doing this themselves, although they have not committed to it yet.
And just another quick question, are, are the diagrams on here trees that need to be removed?
They are not specifically called out, but if they are inside the right-of-way, chances are they will have to go. Either friendly construction itself or when you impact the root structure from the construction. I mean, you're gonna kill the tree. And the, there's not really a way around that, it's unfortunate, but maybe we'll have a firework program for next year.
You said there was some underground stuff to worry about also.
A little further down is worse, but throughout, probably from the next block on, when we get from fifth on, Road Belly Sewer is going to want to remove and replace their existing concrete sanitary sewer lines. That's a very age of technology.
That's what I was gonna ask, can we do improvements and upgrades while it's exposed?
Yeah, and this is all on, this is all on their dime, this is not something that we paid for, but I wanted to make them aware that we do a street program. So they will be looking to remove and replace those, some of the other projects they have going on in town next year include slip lining work. But for old concrete lines, I mean, I probably shouldn't say, they're probably experienced a lot of inflow and infiltration on those lines. So in terms of satisfying our, our own plans for maintaining our water quality and maintaining environmentally consistent approach to our improvements, replacing that water line, or that sanitary sewer line is pretty high in general.
But to my point, we work with all the agencies in order to do infrastructure repair as well as torn up as opposed to after.
Yeah, absolutely, because we'll put a five-year warranty on new pavement and utility companies that don't get with the program while we're doing the roadway reconstruction are gonna unfortunately not be able to cut the asphalt again for five years. The reality is that changes if there's an emergency situation, but in general, and I had to do it on one of our other streets out here, you know, calling cable companies, you know, you're not gonna cut the street to put in a service line, it's got a warranty on it, so. Yeah, we coordinate with them to get as much, I like stuff going underground, but there's just a bunch of stuff underground already. So I think that's one of the things that power companies are looking at, is the feasibility of actually considering going underground and then kind of conflicts still run into it.
I was wondering if we could do that, that would be great.
I love it, I asked.
Yeah.
I don't, it's expensive. It is expensive.
Next?
Yep.
So, fifth to fourth, only one vehicle encroachment here. Now, mind you, for some of these vehicle encroachments, we've tagged them as encroachments. The parking that is encroaching the right-of-way is not going to go away, it will simply become paved on-street parking rather than gravel and dirt. Not quite on-street parking, or some, not all.
And in some of these cases, they can quite frankly rearrange their vehicles closer to the existing structures and, and not be an encroachment, that scenario would picked up a certain point in time, but, you know, you, you've been out there as much as I have, you know, what kind of encroachments we're looking at with vehicles in the right-of-way.
On the upside, we'll have dedicated parking spaces.
That's correct.
So, fourth to third, here again, a couple vehicle encroachments, one is that a structure encroachment, which I believe is a garage. That house is currently for sale.
This one?
Yeah, one-eleven West Fourth. That outbuilding is not in very good shape, I don't really think it's usable for a garage. I've had conversations with several people about that property, I know offers have been put in on it, but I think the bank is trying to figure out exactly what it's worth. We will do our best to encourage the buyer, should they come in and want to remodel that structure, to demolish it. It is pre-existing, it's, better or worse, it can stay, but I think it's in everybody's interest to see that go away if there is an opportunity. If the whole property isn't redeveloped, obviously we don't know what will happen with that. And here again, we've got curb extensions on most blocks. Not sure why they did not show one at fourth and church on the east side.
We do have some drainage considerations to work with, we're working with RVSS, we already contacted them about the stormwater management issues on this site. I had the engineer hold off on formalizing further discussions with them until we verified with the council what cross-section we're gonna deal with, because the cross-section depiction is substantially important relative to stormwater management conditions that we're gonna have after the fact, so. There is already an underground stormwater management treatment box, I think there's one at fourth and I think there's one at fifth. The fifth one is actually bigger, but it was addressing some of the stormwater management from other roadway improvements.
I think, Ray, weren't you talking about there's very little slope on the street?
Long tunnel slope of these streets is very flat, so from north to south, it does pick up in some areas. But really, the drainage in this area goes east-west down the number of streets. So, we are gonna have a challenge and we're requiring installation of additional stormwater structures to make sure we drain the street properly. Right now, you know what happens when it rains out there, there's piling, puddling everywhere. And it's gonna need to be addressed in a more formalized manner, that's gonna require us to come up with, in my opinion, the most the most efficient approach is gonna be with some type of under-drain stormwater management.
Okay?
Yep.
So, Church Street transition, we will be doing, or we are, the contractor has proposed curb extensions on church, but not extending out into third. Anything else you really wanna add on that one?
No, I, I'm comfortable with that, I think that sets us up well if you ever wanna expand third. I, I, I'm on the fence about it, to be honest with you, whether or not we would extend bulbouts into the third, but I'm comfortable, as I look at this alignment, what I see out in the field, I'm kind of comfortable leaving it the way it is.
Just to be clear, so we're talking about putting curbs in, on both sides of third, on church, but then not on third as it intersects them?
I'd probably break them and do a transition to the existing edge of the pavement. So we're still working out those details, they left it straight like that until we gave them a better definition and direction on this offset, because it is it's kind of an awkward offset, I like the idea of the bulbouts going east-west and I'm on the fence about them going west.
So here again, we have, we don't have an encroachment, but we do have a house that's very close and vehicles that are parking right up to that house, which are where the sidewalk will be, and you'll see that better on the next slide. We've got a couple other vehicle encroachments that may not be an issue, but on that, this one, that one right there, vehicles are parking where the sidewalk will be. Anything else on this block?
No, I think this is an area again where we're starting to see some of that underground utility conflict coming to play, but I don't think there's anything that's a deal we're completely, to be honest with you.
So, this block will get interesting.
Yeah.
The east side of Church Street is almost, well, virtually one-hundred percent driveway. And at the apartments, we have a number of vehicles that'll park, that'll, the, the first string, first row of vehicles don't look like they will hit the sidewalk, but some people there are parking behind that first row and they won't be able to do that anymore. With that long, basically you've got a whole block on continuous driveway. Be interesting.
Yeah, so the, the laydown for the church driveway is significant, but the depth on those head install is so great that they'll be able to continue parking the same arrangement they already have, or very nearly that, and, you know, they won't be able to double up on them anymore, but I don't see them doing that as often. The, on the west side, that's where we have a significant number of underground utility lines, all in use except for one. That's gonna be a hairy spot, along several portions of this project, we're gonna be replacing the old asbestos concrete water mains and I was planning on going with the, the plastic C nine hundred pipes, but I think when I start looking at some of these conflicts, we might have to go with ducted wire. But there are gonna be several hundred feet of replacement of, of the old AC lines when this project is completed. It doesn't run along the entirety of North Church, some of the blocks are broken with the mains running east-west of the numbered streets. So we don't have full water mains running across every block. One thing that is not accurate here is this curb alignment, this curb alignment should have been projected more parallel to the right-of-way and then a bulbout at the inter, interconnection point of First Street.
Anything else on that one?
No, there'd be very limited on-street parking on the east side of that street.
And so, the summary or the takeaway, we do have some structures that may be affected, although overly far enough out of the construction area that there won't be major issues. We're gonna lose some trees, there's no question. We went through and counted and I think what we. We went through and counted, and I think, what was it, somewhere in the neighborhood of about 30?
About 30 trees.
Some of them are pretty big, so you're probably gonna hear about that. We have a number of properties that, as far as parking, where the sidewalk will be. But, like we mentioned earlier, they will have on-street parking when all this is done. Impacts to public and private utilities, most of which are known, none of which will be fully known until we dig.
Correct.
And then the final, most important note is that this is our first look. This is our first look, it's our first preliminary design, it is not a build-ready design. There is some room for a change, but one of the things Ray and I discussed early on was, you know, what if we kind of wiggle the right-of-way, or the improvements through there a little bit to try to save a few trees? Problem is, we might, we might end up worse off than just going straight. And then your construction costs go up significantly, probably.
One other tree I wanna talk about is at the intersection of Second and Church, the large pine, next to the Fuel Company Jackson. That's a tough tree in terms of maintenance. It's definitely beating up the curb and the asphalt, but the property owner is interested in leaving that in place. It is a significant tree, and it is easily recognizable. I don't have a lot of good options for maintaining our design around that thing. And they have a slate sidewalk along their frontage, it's not handicap accessible. The area around the tree is not handicap accessible. We haven't worked out that detail, but we have been in touch with the property owner on what, if anything, we plan to do with that tree. It does propose, actually, you have to tell the council, it does propose liability for the city. It's in the city right-of-way, it's our tree. It will reach the church on the other side of the street, if it ever goes down. Or actually, it can reach probably every structure at that corner, depending on which direction it goes. So there is some liability associated with it, but it's also a very prominent physical specimen in town, and people are aware of it, so not any hurry to cut it down if we can work around it, but you have to realize that it restricts the interconnectivity of the sidewalks and the handicap accessibility, and it also poses a liability for the city.
That tree is a large one, that's why you're talking about. Are there any other trees that are protected species kind of thing, you're gonna have trouble with?
No, but some are very significant and do provide a lot of shade, and they make those trees look nice. There's no question.
Are there any creative ways to do ball bouts around any of the more prominent trees? I know you lose some parking spaces, and it's probably a considerable cost, but...
The problem is, is it doesn't arrange well with the curb cuts for the driveways.
Gotcha.
You know, once you do the ball bout, you have to come out and come back, if you've got driveway considerations that are actually, in my opinion, just as important. And we can certainly look at trying to save some, but when you sculpt around like that, as Evan said, I mean, you're digging horizontally, and you're interrupting that root structure.
Sure.
Yeah, if you're working anywhere underneath the canopy, you're working over the root system.
You're working the primary root system, yeah.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, you can do it any can statement, but unless you're way better than completely undisturbed, you're probably gonna kill the tree.
With most species. There are some species that'll take a beat, and it's still standard, you'll be surprised, but...
Within our current TSP, is that where the requirements for the sidewalks and things are coming in? Most of Phoenix's, you know, still doesn't have sidewalks, and so it's just part of when we upgrade streets that we also have to upgrade sidewalks and make them ADA accessible and stuff like that.
Correct, and that actually does go, there is some state law behind that as well.
Okay.
The ADA accessibility is an issue that we have to continue to address. There are areas in town that, if they give survey, would be inclined to make even more changes. So, yeah, there's, this is also part of a grant application that I requested from the small city allotment program, and it looks pretty positive, we'll be getting in touch with people. Part of that grant is supported by multi-motor transportation elements within the design package.
What's the serious point, the TSP does offer sidewalks on both sides, it calls for parking on both sides, and this is driven by the TSP?
It's our local street standard, just about everything you've seen built in the last, how many years, is at least that.
About the only area where we would really have any flexibility is the location of the sidewalk, whether it be curb-type or beyond the curb. And then the width of the planter strip is basically whatever's left over.
Just one more thing on trees, are the ones that you're most likely to have to leave in place, now think five, 10, 15, 20 years downstream, are any of those the types that are gonna cause disruption to the sidewalk, you know, the root system breaking out or into the street or anything like that? Or are we good on that aspect of it?
In general terms, yeah, that's exactly what we look at. That's why we look at that tree count, that's what we're comfortable with. There are some, really, it's a lot of the evergreen trees that have a shallow root system. They're very aggressive in pursuing lateral movement on the surface. And the, I think all of those are actually going to be, the probiotic ones will be coming out. I didn't see anything that I saw as being a future encroachment on the improvements.
Good. Evan, or is it, Ray, how many, how many DIAs do we have on this project total?
We have a total of six.
Okay.
I did do a very preliminary effort to determine what the cost might be, but there are so many unknowns that it's, and that would be a 100% cost on, if we, and Ray and I are both really nervous about talking numbers.
Yeah, I'm not asking that number, I'm just asking the number of properties.
But we have, we have six signatures, or six signed deferred improvement agreements. I did not look at each of those to see what their frontage is. It's easy enough to do, I just didn't have a chance to do it before tonight.
Are they generally located in a specific area, or are they spread out?
All over.
Okay.
I looked through them, excuse me, I looked through them, and, you know, the deferred improvement agreement is essentially an agreement that some property owner wants to develop the property, and that could have been over the years. And in order to get that property developed, there was an agreement between the city and them that they would, that they would be allowed to do the improvement, but they wouldn't have to do a sidewalk, or they wouldn't have to do what we're talking about right here. That, 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 that cost and assessment would be deferred to some later date when it happens. And some of those agreements are ones where the owner agrees that they will actually do the improvement as opposed to pay for it later. Some of the agreements are, the city will assess the amount for the cost of the agreement, not, none of them being stated exactly how that assessment's going to be calculated, how it would be apportioned according to what was actually being done, and when that actually happens. Then, once the improvement is done, and the, there's, it would be basically set up to be amortized over so many years so that owner would be able to pay for that improvement over so many years. And then once they're satisfied, the agreement's satisfied, it's recorded, and it's done. So, there's six of them, seven of them, or whatever, and that's, you know, something that no one, at this point, would ever be able to make an assessment as to how much any one of them would cost, because you don't even have a plan yet. I mean, you're just looking at something, and there's no way anyone can do that at that point. But that's something that you would eventually have to look at and make a decision upon once you've got a plan in front of you, whether you want to honor those agreements or not.
And that one, the home changes ownership, is part of the pedal process to bring up those items, and everyone's well aware, when buying a home, that there is a DIA on that particular structure?
When you buy any property, you have to buy with title insurance. I mean, that's just the way the marketplace for property works. And so any title company would look at that property, and that, each of those DIAs, the deferred improvement agreements have been recorded. So, any owner that would, and it says that the owner or the successor, which would be the next owner, is, agrees and will not object to an improvement on the property, or that the assessment will be put on later on. So, yes, anyone would know. Now, whether or not everyone who looks at their title agreements or title insurance and knows exactly what's on their property, they may or may not, but the fact is, is that's a due diligence for property.
But the, you know, I'm back page, fine print, I'm...
Well, I mean, it'll be, it'll be out in the section, it'll say, you know, you might have 11 different exceptions on your title insurance, and one of them may contain a deferred improvement agreement number, such-and-such document. And that would then be normally copied and put in the booklet of your title insurance, so you would be able to look at it and say, oh, that's what it says, and that's what the agreement is. Again, that's something that you're, you're required to do on every sale of a property, and you're also required, you know, to basically have knowledge if you're out there buying properties. I mean, you're assumed.
I can state with certainty that the last house that had one that came up for sale, it was revealed because I had calls, so people are aware.
Yeah, that's good.
Would it allow for more flexibility if we just did sidewalk on one side of the street? There's quite a bit of that in Phoenix already. Skyline, the whole Skyline neighborhood, there's sidewalk on one side of the street.
That's totally up to the council on how you wanna address the TSP.
But it's a planning for a...
Planning for that, right?
Usually, that's only done when you have a topographic constraint, such as on Ammerman, where very steep, very narrow right-of-way. You can certainly elect to go with something different. However, as we recently discussed with Main Street, if we elect to go with an alternative to what's in the TSP, we get to run it through planning.
Yeah.
So, we can do it, but, yeah, it's not a simple make it so from the council.
And then, is it also come up against state? So, Ray, earlier when I asked the question about sidewalks, you had mentioned that there's a number of, like, state laws that have to do with sidewalk accessibility as well. Would that be a barrier?
Well, where we put the sidewalks in, we'll need to make them accessible. Where we're providing connectivity to adjacent sidewalk systems that are accessible, we'll have to be accessible as well. Could I make the argument that you could put the sidewalks on the east side and maintain connectivity with the balance of the existing sidewalk network? Probably, it won't help you anyway, you go further in. You wanna go to the next block and go to Pine, someday that street's gonna need to be improved as well. I mean, basically, you're looking at a different approach to providing connectivity on that.
What you're talking about state dictates. It's not dictating you have to have sidewalks on both sides, it's dictating that you have to have ADA compliant.
Yeah, I didn't say...
It's up to the city to say whether you wanna do one, one sidewalk versus two.
The issue on Main Street, what's the shortest way to explain this? Dealt primarily with something that is there now and then potentially taking it away, and that's where we run into issues. You could do a treatment on one side, just like parking, you could do parking on one side only. It would be a variance to the, you know, it would be a change to what's established in the TSP, but you could propose it, and it would have to go through planning permission unless we find something in the code that would get us out of that. More often than not, if you're looking at a, especially a, taking a pedestrian treatment away from one side and concentrating it on the other, you would go with a wider treatment on that one side, like they did in Metford with the trail that goes up Hillcrest. I don't know how wide that is, probably six or eight feet. But significantly wider than a standard sidewalk to accommodate two-way traffic.
But we don't have to do that, right? Can we, Church, you have any intensive sidewalk?
Probably not 10 feet on one side, but you'd probably wanna go wider than five, which is what the TSP would call for on both sides. I'm not saying what that number should be, I'm just saying you could probably want to go a little wider to allow for a two-way gap.
Wouldn't make a less than sense.
Any more questions from council? I just wanna say this is the first preliminary cut at what we're gonna do. We're gonna have meetings that will involve people on Church Street, we'll notify Church Street of different meetings we're gonna have, it might be a town hall type meeting, it might be during city council meeting, but there will be notifications gone out to people on Church Street so they can have input and feel about things. What that...
What timeframe do you envision that occurring over?
I'm not sure, you have to go through staff and Eric and...
Well, I mean, we get, we need to get this, if you wanna get this project built anytime soon, we'd have to, you can't take three months talking about the configuration.
I don't envision three months.
So that's what I'm asking, what do you envision, like a month or two, two general information sessions?
It could be, it could be in two weeks if we can arrange, we can go follow people on Church Street. It could be in two weeks, I don't know what the timeframe is, but I go to Eric and we'll make it happen as soon as we have to.
I think we can, we can move whatever case you want. I would encourage, and I don't think anybody on the council would disagree, that we need to notify all of the affected property owners, and it's a small enough area that I'd be happy to take flyers around each house, it's no big deal.
I would too.
Rather than, send mailers out in case the properties aren't owned by the residents, but, you know, we can, we can do flyers to houses in an hour.
Yeah.
And then make sure everybody is aware, give them an opportunity to comment. I think that's definitely warranted, and I think the biggest concern we're probably gonna have is the trees. Trees number one, parking number two.
Sidewalks to both sides of the street, sir.
We need to make sure everybody has enough time to have a voice, and Jared from the back, and it's a good point, that it's winter holiday break too, so a lot of people are focused elsewhere, and rightfully so, so we need to take that into account also.
As long as you're comfortable with this pushing the construction season into the 18, 19 budget, and, you know, make, this will end up going up the bid in, later in the spring, and as contractors get busy, you're, is it, important?
Yeah, I don't foresee a delaying of what we're doing, we have a meeting in January, I mean, I'm not looking three months out.
Oh, is that, I mean, that is, that is a month, you know, that's a significant amount of time for our...
There's really more than 13 people over there.
Yeah, here are two people.
That's true.
We have this...
So I think that's it for us.
So, the third, there's more questions guys, if I go to the people?
One more question, how many fences and other of those sort of structures do you think that we're gonna have to remove? And we're gonna be responsible for removing those, and landowners are responsible for placing them.
There are none that we would have to necessarily remove that aren't placed within the right-of-way.
Right.
So, you know, you're not necessarily obligated to pay for someone's construction within the right-of-way. However, you probably will in the case of something that's minorly affected, but I don't know that that's a full necessity, but there are gonna be a couple of fences along the road that have to be relocated.
Is that indicated anywhere?
No.
No?
We didn't go into that much.
Okay. I just was curious, we were talking about this, and how does that even happen? Don't, when you build a fence, don't, isn't that part of, like, you evaluate where your land is?
Well, you'd think so.
We, we're responsible for submitting plans that show they're following the rules, but we're not, the city is not authorized to verify a property line.
Oh.
Only a private surveyor can do that. We can do all kinds of legal issues that I'm sure you can talk about if you want to, with trying to verify somebody's private property line. But, so we count on them to accurately represent where they're putting the fence. Most of these properties, you know, these houses are 50-plus years old. You're not gonna find a property there, it's just not there. And so, you know, they could be off by a foot forward or a foot...
Especially in the age of neighborhood, there's a lot of, he said, she said, oh, I was told I could put my fence here, I could go my, or things were just put up, and nobody was made aware of it. We just did one over here on Rose, if you see where there's just a little bit north of Cheryl, you see there's a fence that does a notch around one of our fire hydrants. Well, you know, they clearly put their fence like 10 feet into the right-of-way, so you have to address that and reset them.
Well, in discussion, we really have a lot to do with planning, and we'll...
Well, in discussion, we really have a lot to do with planning, but we have two people in the audience that want to speak on this issue. John, if you'd want to talk?
Sure. I'll stay here and I'm happy to let this through to different...
My name's John Coiser and I live at 108 Sixth Street. And basically, our concern is that, I mean, I realize this is preliminary and I also realize that the progress is going to overwhelm us eventually. But if you could go to the, 108, yeah, right here. My mother-in-law in 91, she lives at this corner at 110 Sixth. I have two questions, basically. First one is when this sidewalk comes in, there's quite a slope there that goes towards the garage in the house. And I see on Rose Street where that happened before and the sidewalk is like this high above the ground and then somebody put a pencil on the inside of the yard to keep people from falling in to the yard. I don't know what we're supposed to do about that. But my other question is, her driveway, and it always has been since 1946 or so, comes in on an angle to go into the carport. And there's no real other place to put that. And I just wondered how it's going to be addressed.
We're going to look at particularly in that intersection, there might have to be a modification to come off the sixth or to get in some other way to make the accessibility work because it is a pretty unusual situation right there.
Yeah.
I'll suggest that John come into the office and talk to you guys individually about that particular property. So they only know the details, but you're more than welcome to call in, make an appointment and talk to you.
Very familiar with civil drawings and architecture.
And the grades aren't set yet.
Yes, I understand.
So that's, that's a tricky one.
I just wanted to bring those two.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks.
Tony? We have 30 minutes, okay?
My name's Tony Chavez, I live at 210 Church, between Second and Third. Just about every tree on our side of the street, fall is going to be eliminated. And 13 years ago when we bought this house, we planted trees with the projection of mature trees for shade. And if we lose those trees, I mean, our house temperature goes up about 10 or 15 degrees in summer. You know, the fence we didn't build, but the fence is going to come down. It is obviously in the right of way. Some of our other landscape is going to go away. And I'm just curious on that stuff, who's, you know, if we lose trees and fence, is the city going to work with us in replacing that stuff? Or are we just, are we going to be our own on that stuff?
We can do the removal. We'd be doing tree installation, shade tree installation. We expect to do some additional installations along the corridor.
You mean replacement on the properties worth effective?
The shade, the trees, you have to look at, you know, all the different factors associated with driveways and where the utilities are going to run before you can actually say you're going to place the trees there. But, you know, I wouldn't say that all of the houses will be able to get them because some utility relocations are going to require reconstruction along the edge of the street scape. And with the number of driveway penetrations on one side and the gone utilities, there are some areas are going to be restricted from having installation of street trees. Your particular lot, I wouldn't know for sure yet, but I don't have any utility installations programmed for that side of the street. So that one would be one of those locations where we look at for install the trees.
And on a non-silvestine selfish side, I mean, the field committee's going to lose their two big woods very possibly on the, on the street along with their woodshed. And then the two big trees on the end lot on Third, they're going to lose their trees as well. And I don't know if you've noticed, but at some point, you know, grade level, what John was talking about, we're, I mean, from the street to our front door, our property drops about 18 inches. So if they do a side, you know, are we still, are we going to have a wall as well off of the sidewalk? That's...
Also, the east side of the street is definitely lower than the west side of the street.
So a couple of things I had real quick that I think should be addressed for all future stuff. The general consensus is that property owners should be notified at the start of this project saying, hey, there's going to be people out measuring, marking, this is what's coming. You'll be notified for any future meetings as it progresses instead of just, hey, why are these people on my property walking around driving stakes in their property? And, you know, a lot of us have to hear about sidewalks from those people, which I'm sure that's the last thing they want to deal with. They just want to put the stakes in the ground and measure stuff. You know, when it's a small number of people, everybody should have been notified at the very beginning because it's easier to talk to people when they're not pissed off, excuse me, than midway when, you know, the villagers all mad.
As I mentioned to you individually, the point well taken and we'll talk to staff and make sure it happens next time.
That was a very friendly miscommunication, I think, from the surveyor. I think they were miscommunicated about who was going to be the focus of that certification.
Well...
Yes, that's, quite frankly, you know, I'll discuss that with them and make sure that we...
Well, the city should have sent out notice before the people were out there walking around people's properties. People should have been notified.
That's what I'm talking about. That's the typical process that is mishandled.
A little mailer in the mail. And then, so public design input would be at a future meeting that you're talking about, hearing from us. I think the replacement of fences and trees and landscape that are put during this project, is there going to be a way to get to a common answer for that? You know, Ray addressed some of that, but it's going to be an answer that a lot of people are going to want to know.
Thank you.
And then the cost responsibility version to the DIA's, is that, are those addresses, if some of us don't have paperwork or can't find in our paperwork, is it possible to find out and notify those people, hey, this is coming up?
Attorney shaking his head, yes?
Yes, I don't see any difficulty in, if you have a DIA, a deferred improvement agreement on your property then, or if your neighbor does, then they will be contacted. Again, whether or not, I mean, there's a whole number of things that go into the DIA, but certainly, you know, you have a right to see it and we'd make it available. I wouldn't say that, I'd say that.
I mean, if there's only six of them, it seems...
Pretty easy, doesn't it?
Well, there seems to be an overlap of, well, if it's in the right of way, we, the city has the right to say what happens in that. But if the homeowner doesn't have a right to say what happens in the right of way, yet they're still liable for construction of that if they've signed an agreement, is that what that means?
The agreements themselves will spell out what it was or what the party, what the two parties have a right to. And the party or persons who have been given a right to develop, it'll say on there that any improvements that were, need to be made on their frontage they would otherwise be responsible for, which oftentimes in this case would be like, many times owners will be responsible for the actual sidewalk in front of their, like businesses, for instance, or whatever. And so it will, I can't remember exactly what language is on each one of them, but it says that if you are going to be responsible, that is, that's what you're responsible for and you will be, your assessment will be done proportional to, and it has some language in there, it talks about proportionality and then that it will be pro rata, that it will be, everybody will share equally according to a proportion. And what that proportion may mean, whether it's a lot size or whether that's frontage or whether that's, you know, other type of things, that isn't even stated in how it's developed that at least over the city council would have to decide what's proportional. And so it doesn't say exactly what it is. It'll say if it needs to be a sidewalk, it needs to be improved, then that party would be responsible for paying for the sidewalk. Again, that's, you know, that's an agreement that was signed back in 1994, for instance. And whether or not that agreement would even be on, you know, enforced at this point, you know, that's still a question. So there's no way, I'm sorry, this isn't a way to tell you, you know, whether or not you're going to be responsible or whoever the DIA would be, yeah, would be responsible.
And friends that fall under that.
Yeah, right.
And, you know, six people sign agreements and the other 27 people...
That's a question mark, and that's your exact, we're still working through that.
Tony, are you okay, any other minute?
No, I think that was, that was, that was it, just...
A good question, it's a concern, we appreciate you back. It's good.
I can be here this weekend, I can ask one more question.
Fire away.
I just have one more question. Do you have a list of the six or seven people that have signed that? Is there where we can access that? So if they find out if my mother-in-law has...
Absolutely, yeah.
So we just don't... Chances are not, you're not on that list because that's an old house and it hasn't been approved, so nothing would have figured it.
Right, yeah.
Who do we, who do we find out?
I've got the list too, yeah, yeah, send me the list and...
Well, guys, with that said, I'm going to, we've got a lot more to cover tonight. We're going to take a five minute break because we've got a long time to talk about every move or one other item. So we'll turn until it's close to eight o'clock, there's about five minutes. We'll take a break and we'll come back, okay? Thank you.